All right, we appreciate everyone's patience tonight. We had a close session that went a little bit over, so we're grateful once again for your patience. So I think we got the full crew here waiting for our city attorney, but oh, there he is? Perfect. All right, I'm going to call to order the Monday, September 25th, Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Mayor Pro-Ten Macy, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can. Thank you.
Word came yesterday that the Writers Guild has reached an agreement with the Hollywood Studios. Last week, Canadian auto workers ratified a historic contract with Ford Motor Company, and thousands of UAW workers on strike today with audacious demands that hope to return auto workers to their once-held status as premier manufacturing positions. Starbucks workers across the country have filed petitions to join a union, fighting store by store against a Goliath who has refused to bargain in good faith with its employees. For my entire life, working people have received the smallest and smallest share of the pie. They've been asked to make sacrifices to help companies be competitive. They've been told constantly that they're lucky to have a job, and that some economic calamity or another necessitates givebacks and concessions. Wages stagnate, medical insurance costs rise, a pension's unthinkable, and you should count your lucky stars to get a modest 401(k) match. That system is broken, and people from varied walks of life are standing up for their rights, to dignity, a decent life, and in the private sector, the right to a fair share of a company's success. People cannot keep working more for less. Labor unions have an important role to play in that struggle, and it's empowering to see them revitalized. What's most inspiring to me about a labor union in action is the core labor concept of solidarity. In a labor union, regardless of your race, gender, sexuality, political beliefs, unite in common purpose: to seek improvements for everyone. Millionaire TV and movie writers held out so that young writers aren't exploited. Highly compensated UAW skilled trade employees are on the line fighting for temporary workers who make $16 an hour. So as this summer of strikes cools into fall, we can't lose sight of the message, not just for workers, but for all of us: solidarity.
All right. The next item on our agenda tonight is a proclamation designating October, Michigan Library Appreciation Month. And I see some board members are here, along with Director Irwin. I'm going to come down here.
And the President.
Do I get to come up too?
Let me debate that. I suppose I'm going down there for Ten Macy.
Really?
So it's really a privilege for me to be able to read this proclamation. I think anybody that spent any time in Royal Oak knows how amazing our library is, and the work that the library board, both past and present, along with directors past and present, especially with our director Sandy Irwin, and all the librarians and all the staff, and everything that they do, not just to keep books on shelves, but all the programming, the summer reading, you name it, our library is doing it, and has proven to be a leader, not just in the state, but I'd argue throughout the country, on how to run a library, how to keep libraries relevant, and how to make sure our library is always a point of pride, a very helpful resource, and a gem of our community. So it really is an honor to read this, and I'll begin. This is a proclamation designating October 2023 Michigan Library Appreciation Month. Whereas the Michigan Library Association annually designates the month of October as a statewide observance to celebrate the contribution of Michigan's public, school, academic, tribal, cooperative, and special libraries. Whereas the Royal Oak Public Library is an essential institution that serves as a cornerstone of knowledge, learning, and civic and community engagement. And whereas libraries play a vital role in fostering education, lifelong learning, and literacy for people of all ages, backgrounds, and abilities. And whereas libraries provide a welcoming and inclusive environment that encourages exploration, discovery, and personal growth. And whereas libraries offer access to a diverse array of resources, including books, digital media, educational entertainment programs, and technology. And whereas libraries play a significant role in promoting the right to read and the right to access information, enabling individuals to make informed decisions and engage in open discourse. And whereas the Royal Oak Public Library highlights and celebrates the right to read, view, and listen to what you choose during banned books week, which takes place October 1st through 7th, 2023. And whereas libraries provide essential services to understand communities, bridging digital divide, and offering critical support for job seekers, students, and individuals seeking to improve their lives. And whereas hundreds of libraries and millions of library supporters across Michigan are celebrating Michigan Library Appreciation Month this October. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Mayor Fournier, and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Michigan Library Appreciation Month. During this time, I encourage all residents, community organizations, and public officials to join in celebrating the libraries in our community, their dedicated staff, and the countless ways in which libraries enrich our lives and contribute to the betterment of society. And I'll present this to Director Irwin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We were joking, I promised not to sing, but really, thank you all to our community, to the commission, and to everyone here in this room and beyond these walls for supporting the library. You supported us when our village came up for a vote; now we are fully funded. You support us by walking in our doors. You support the library by supporting everybody's right to read what they choose, finding materials when they enter the doors of the library that reflect them as a person. So thank you all for your ongoing support, and thank you to the library board for the amazing work that they do to ensure that the library runs smoothly, that we have great policies in place that will support all of the people of Royal Oak. Thank you.
That brings us to our next agenda item tonight, which is public comment. Before we commence with public comment, just a few... Oh, I got to approve the agenda first, don't I? Yes, so item number five, approval of the agenda. My mistake. Get me out of my seat, I lose track of my spot. All right. Does anyone wish to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Commissioner Cola, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion. Does that include public comment being next? Okay. All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. All right, now that brings us to public comment. Before we start, just a few remarks. The city commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the city commission on any city-related issue, whether it's on the agenda or not. I ask that comments be directed to the city commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. In addition to public comment, there will be a public hearing at tonight's meeting. If you are here to comment on the public hearing assessment for the special assessment for the paving of Masoy Road, you can wait until that time to address the body when the hearings opened. And if you wish to speak at public comment and at that hearing, you're welcome to do that as well. If you wish to speak tonight, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor. We ask that you come to the podium. For the record, you will state your name and address. Please be mindful that we wish to hear from anyone who wants to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes per person, not per topic. And there's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, no problem, you can reach out to us outside this meeting as well. Please note that we typically don't respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are capturing those questions, and when the topic is discussed, we will ask those questions on your behalf. If your questions are unrelated to a topic on tonight's agenda, our city manager is making note, as well as our community engagement specialist Judy Davids. If you haven't reached out about the topic before, I highly encourage you to leave your information, so when we get the answers, we can get them back to you. So with that, who's first? I'm going to go with Tom right here in the front, because he's got a special announcement, important announcement.
Thank you much, Mayor Fournier. My name is Tom Talkweller, I live at 1018 Longfellow. I am here representing the Royal Historical Society, and I would formally like to invite the commission, people in the audience, and anybody watching at home. We are having our 82nd annual banquet on October 10th at the First United Methodist Church here in Royal Oak. It's a very special dinner for us. We are honoring our longtime curator, Muriel Versady, who has retired, and we will be introducing our new curator at that point. And as I say, tickets are $40 per person, they're available by contacting the museum directly, and you know, we will take any walk-in, a lot of people do that anyway. We consider ourselves, like the library, a very special place, our museum, and we've always said we're the keepers of Royal Oak's history. It means a lot to us, and I hope it means a lot to you. So I hope everybody that can and would like to attend... Am I not on? I, you know, hope everybody can make it to this. And with your permission, I'd like to drop some copies with the city clerk. Is that a corrective of our flyer for this? Thank you.
All right, who's next? We'll go with Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor, Bill Harrison. I'm here about item number 11, the redevelopment of the Greenfield project. You know, it was brought forth as a PUD, it should never have been a PUD. The zoning allows for three units. They first presented 12 units and backed off to 10. That's negotiating 101, you show them death and they'll accept pain. What's really disturbing to me is the fact that the planning commission, it took three votes to get it to this point. First, they wanted to deny it, and the planning commissioners Fournier and Douglas were against that, and then they wanted to pass for it, and again, Fournier and Douglas were the ones that voted for it, which causes them to go to a third vote, which pushed it to the city commission. The problem is, you know, you've heard tirelessly how you folks have accepted money from the representative of this, and his firm, and then others that he's represented. And it's just getting tiring to see all these decisions that are made to benefit those who benefit you. And it's almost, it's just reminiscent of the Biden crime family, and it's sad. I know you enjoy it. So anyway, the other thing is the parking structure on Washington. Why has the Washington entrance been closed for, I don't know, two, three weeks, and the sign directing people to go to Center Street? Are you folks really trying to shut down business on Washington so that they go out of business and you can redevelop Washington like you've done Main Street? Makes me very suspicious.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. All right, who's next? We'll go with Mr. Ashley next.
Alan Ashley, Royal Oak Manor. I'm going to talk about 10 and 11. It seems that this commission and the planning commission has one thought in mind: if it's flat and it's not used, let's build a building on it three to four stories high and whatever. It's now you're building all these apartments and condos and all that. What you're building is transient apartments. When your parents were here, they bought a house, put grass and trees and flowers out there. They were planned to stay there 25, 30 years. What you're building are people that are going to be here five, six years and say goodbye after that. Why don't you, instead of building all these cement and concrete and all this stuff, and then you're going to put solar panels in that we have to buy from, we send our material over to China, China puts it in there and makes solar panels? Why don't you just put houses with families, single families, with grass and trees, so paying people can stay here 10, 20, 30 years, instead of staying here old five years and move on and that's it? Because that is what's happening here. You're not building family homes. You are building transient homes for people to stay five to 10 years and then move on. If that's your city plan, this city is going to disappear pretty soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. We'll go out here.
Good evening, everyone. Pete Forenzy, running for city commissioner as well. Took a little walk over the weekend, and wanted to see what downtown looked like, and wanted to see what people had to say on the Northwood Sector, right there where you guys are doing the bump outs and the road narrowing. None of the people that I spoke with liked it. They don't even know why it's going on, but stated that trying to cut down speeders. Got to tell you, Royal Oak doesn't really have many speeders. If anything, they're catatonic, sitting behind the wheel, sitting at a green light. That's what I'm seeing. I don't want to see speeders. Either way, this project's going to cost an arm and a leg, based upon what I'm seeing here, and we could be putting this towards the roads that need repair, utility that needs repair. Monica had made mention to it during the forum, you know, putting efforts towards the roads, surface of the roads repaving. These roads are cut horribly, cracked, I mean, the cars are falling apart. I mean, I'm seeing it. So the cost of this, I'm just curious. I'm dying to know how much this would cost just along this Northwood Sector, because the people that are living upon those roads, or that road, not good. Beyond that, I took a walk through downtown Royal Oak as well, and this is really going This is messed up. The people that I, the business owners that I did speak with, they're not renewing their leases in another year or two. 12, to be exact. Up along Washington, up along Main, and it's due in part to the parking meters. Granted, there's a lot of parking structures, sure, they can park there, but here's the thing, the folks are putting money in the meter, they're paying the meter, and they're still getting cited. Now MPS, Municipal Parking Systems out of Minnesota, has a great review rating online. They're not just doing this here in Royal Oak, they're doing this throughout the entire country, in cities just like Royal Oak. And that in itself is concerning. I mean, there could have been some things done. I know there was a no-bid contract that was voted on back in, what, 12, 2012, 2013? Put you guys in a bit of a pinch. I don't think, I don't want to believe that you guys would have signed up for this, knowing that this is where it was going to end up going. I truly believe that you guys mean well, but at the end of the day, here we are. And the downtown area is getting more and more desolate, and in the next year or two to come, I can't believe I'm going to be actually seeing something as bad as where it's heading. You guys got a lot on your plate. There's going to be a lot on my plate if I get in. Thank you for your time.
All right, who's next? Mr. Fisher.
Biden's coming tomorrow, and Royal Oak Music Theater's advertising explosions over the skies, better keep an eye on Bill. Joseph Fisher, 310 West Sixth Street. I'm here tonight to talk about partially parking and also electric vehicles. The perfect circle back today came when I was walking, and I saw a train going through town, is on my way to Royal Oak Masala, which is a great place you should go to. And I saw probably about a dozen, I don't know if they were empty or full, tanks of fuel going through our town. And I think that underscores the reason why we need to, even though it is expensive, embrace electronic availability to electric vehicle charging now. None of the handicap spaces in the garages have access to electric vehicle charging. That's an accessibility issue, and that definitely is, I don't think it's acceptable, personally. I think the, you know, I don't really like the new parking system. I do hope you guys would have the will to change vendors, but that said, we still have these posts everywhere that have electricity running to them. And if those could be somehow modified into chargers that deliver a light charge to vehicles while they were in town, it could be, make the street parking look even more attractive. What else? Aging in place, about that. Please keep in mind the people who are younger and intend to age in place, like myself. And my specific concern is that too much of downtown would be bought up by people who seek to sell condos to somebody who has no interest in ownership. And just because they have no ownership interest doesn't mean I don't care about this city. I care about this city very much. Just means it's not a wise financial decision for me. And maybe they are transient places, and a lot of people work from home now. And frankly, in my business, if we have a lot of people in Royal Oak working from home, that means a lot of trips to the airport for me, which means good money. So I like to see that. I rolled out of bed to get here, I'm going to roll back into bed. Please come see me October 17th, 7:30 PM, Royal Oak Comedy Castle. Visit your challenge, it's a Detroit to LA comedy competition, so if you're tired of me, send me to LA.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. All right, who's next?
Nancy Poprovsky, 1119 Batavia. Thanks for listening. Clicks were abundant in my high school. They manipulate you if you stay, shun you if you leave, peer pressure. What's dangerous about this? People need respect with difference of views, ethnic background, skin color, lifestyles, gender preference, age, economic status, et cetera. Sometimes in government, local and national, we see good teams suddenly go bad, like when a four to three vote for a developer's bad project oddly becomes seven to zero for the pro-developer, and is still a bad project. How do you guide adults to help the individual in common good when they have been tarnished by bad decisions or bad behavior, and swayed to go with a clique they know are wrong and unethical? How do you stop this cycle? You ask the adults to look deep inside and think how they hurt someone by their actions, just like you ask a child, maybe an apology, certainly always telling the truth. You teach that child to be honest and admit their mistakes. Why am I discussing this? I believe our city government needs to move forward in many ways, but most of all, we need to move with care and thoughtfulness. Back when people could trust each other, choose quality of life other than over bigger, flashier buildings and homes, taking care of what we already have versus being greedy and wanting more and more while harming the environment. Treating our neighbors' hardships like family, and not letting big development ruin anyone's life. People first, not money first. Let's get rid of the government clicks now by listening and bringing in more voices. You might find out that those other voices always wanted what was best, but they weren't listened to because they weren't in the clique, just like in high school. Special thanks to Jimmy Carter, Democrat, who founded Habitat for Humanity, wasn't in the clique. Abe Lincoln, Republican, helped abolish slavery, wasn't in the clique. And I know this sounds weird, but Kermit the Frog, It's Not Easy Being Green Party, who helps our greatest hope for the future, our children. Building their self-esteem, spreading kindness, so that maybe we won't have any more dangerous clicks. And as far as the 13 and Greenfield Project and the six trees on site, a true arborist tries to save diseased trees to make them healthy, and trim healthy trees that could be dangerous. Some developers cut down healthy trees because they are dangerous to their pockets. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who's next? Mr. Sackett.
Good evening. Mark Sackett, Royal Oak Leprechaun's general manager. I just want to give you a quick update. We had some good news last Friday. I met with John Fidelli, walked the park, looked at all the park, all the things we would like to see done to it. Talked with Aaron Filipski, great conversation, everything was going well there. We've got a lot of changes we want to make, all positive changes for the community of Royal, for Royal Oak community, for us, of course. It's going to look, it's going to cost a lot of money. I found somebody who was going to, I didn't find a new person, but it's a similar person that was willing to invest over $150,000 into that park and make these improvements. Right now, John Fidelli and myself are working on an amendment to the agreement, and hopefully we'll do that, but we're real excited. Obviously, it's going to come to the city for approval and everything. They're not huge, huge changes, but they are costly changes, and as long as you know that we're, we keep on investing more and more into this park, and it's going to be a great place for the community to visit, and hopefully a whole lot of people there as we move forward. So you'll be hearing about that soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sackett. Yes, ma'am. The red sweater?
Phyllis Salter, Lafayette. Okay, homeowners buy homes for location and privacy, and is likely their main investment. How do you think they would feel when one day the word gets to them that they are likely to have a major change in their lives? The fact here is that the subject is not zoned for this plan. A few years ago, a builder wanted to get a variance to build two homes on our block. It was about 10 years ago, actually. The board considered the wishes of the residents that attended the meeting and decided in our favor. One, two, three, it's done. Why is this so difficult? This system requires only four votes, I could be wrong, you can correct me, to decide on the lives of the residents, although getting seven votes here is not usually a problem. Over the last few years, we have been told that these and other changes will not affect our values. That was an insult, similar to saying the world is flat. Now we have another. Parking won't be a problem because only one person will be occupying the unit. What is the point of having zoning if it is only to approve variances to please those who have enough money and feel entitled to harm a neighborhood, whether it's for new construction, additions, or other uses? Unfortunately, this is not the only area in the city that has experienced or planned to have detrimental changes. Not only the residents, but the whole city will be affected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Janice Wagner. Got several things to talk about here tonight. On the consent agenda is the Open Gov software purchase. I'm disappointed in what I see now from the existing program that we have. I was hoping, since we were promised, that the strategic goals, there would be a portal at the end of the first quarter that I at the end of the first quarter that I'd be able to click on it, see a bar chart on the progress and that type of thing. I can't, there's, there's a lot of information out there, but there isn't like a simple, what I would think that a software program would, would generate. I was on lead teams for ERP implementation. I'm all for software, but I would like to see more transparent information to the public. I would, I would like to be able to click and see how much a project is costing us, like the animal shelter, how much have we spent so far? How much has Krieger Klatt earned or any one of the other contractors as a, as the public, we should have that transparency. The state of Michigan has it on their website. So keep that in mind when you're approving the Open Gov software tonight. On Agenda Item 9A, the Senior Advisory Board, I'm urging you to vote in favor of this. In other cities, seniors are considered 50 and over, ARPA, ARP considers 50 and over. We have 19,000 citizens of the city of Royal Oak, residents of the city of Royal Oak who are 50 and over. So I'm saddened that three of you couldn't have gotten together and put this on the agenda a long time ago because the task force completed their work last December. So whatever you can do to expedite this, I would appreciate it. And speaking of adding items to the agenda, Siren, we signed a contract six months ago for a max, for a minimum of $150,000 that was including scope of work, preparing reporting materials, attending and presenting communication impact at the city commission meeting. They do this all the time with the DDA and I'd like to see something similar here as part of their contract. And speaking of transparency, in our charter, there's lots of ordinances, many of them are outdated, they need to be looked at. We're going through reorganizing the list so it's easy to access different items on there. But one that's in there that shouldn't be excluded, and I think is very important, is the ethics, ethics ordinance. And in the ethics ordinance, it says that you are required as, as members of the city commission to fill out a form like this that reveals, that states what property interests you have, what business interests you have, what interests family members may have, that it's 10% or more. And I think that's very important as far as transparency to the residents and the people who elected you. Only one of you has, has filled that out and is on, is on file in the city manager's office. So I'd appreciate it if you did that. Thank you.
All right, who's next? Go on the back, back here.
Good evening. My name is Frank Hobrist. And I came here in June to discuss a tragedy that I owned the building at 408 South Washington. Used to be the Kretzky Department Store. And I received a citation from code enforcement because for the last nine months, we've been trying to make a repair. And after nine months, we were able to get some understanding with engineering to give us a permit to put a scissor lift on the sidewalk. I think, Mr. Break, I think you saw me there this afternoon because it was delivered to the back of the building. Okay, so we're in the process of making this repair. Why your code enforcement found it necessary to give me a citation on 18th of May? And then the court found me guilty on the 1st of June. I've subsequently received more citations and I'm also now a candidate for a bench warrant for my arrest. This is your court. I called the court. You know what they said? Pay the fine. Just pay it. Okay. I appreciate, Mr. Break, you sent me a lovely letter trying to say that we should sit down, we should iron out these differences. And we should because I got to tell you, the gentleman that spoke earlier about the vacancies and the business failures, it's rampant. I've got a tenant that's been in business for 20 years that was evicted. But we're trying to work these things out. Mr. Break, I came to see you on September 7th. I was told by your staff that you were on vacation. I said, okay. I'll wait till you come back. A week later, I came back to your office on the 15th of September and I was sold. Mr. Break has no time for you. Okay. You wrote me a lovely letter saying we should sit down and we should meet. We should. Tell your staff that I'm here to talk and I'd like to get this situation resolved. We were up on it, working our building today, will be done in a couple of weeks. And I do have another citation also, and I have a court date on October 17th. So this is what it means to do business in downtown Royal Oak. Mr. Break, I'll send you a response. It's been a rough summer, but I'm going to send you a response and hopefully we can work this out. Thank you.
All right, who's next? Young man in the back.
Hello, City Commission. My name is John Pap. I'm 17 years old and I'm actually just here for extracurricular, my government class. But I felt compelled to stand up and speak about something that I've noticed on my drive to school every day. I live on Hillside near Shrine High School where I go. And every day when I go to school, I pull out, I take Chester going into Woodward. And every day I look down to see if there's cars coming so I can turn right onto Woodward. And my vision is blocked by Uncle Ed's oil shop. It has like a bunch of signs saying that it's open or whatever. And I've just found that they block my vision a lot. So, you know, nothing that's going to make me swerve into traffic, but I do see a lot of cars go that way as they come out of Shrine High School, parents dropping their kids off. Everyone kind of goes out the back through the suburbs and back out that way. So I think that in the interest of driver safety, that it should be addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Pap. Just a quick question. Are these like extra signs? They're not permanent signs? Are they like the ones that fold over like this?
Yeah, they're the ones that are kind of shaped like that and they...
They're temporary, though. You can, they put, they could...
Yeah, I think they're just stuck in the ground. Yeah, they could probably remove them.
That's very helpful. We can't solve the problem unless we're made aware of it. And I think that's probably against our site ordinance. So we'll have somebody go out and take a look and do an assessment on it. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Ms. Donahue? I saw that you raised your hand. No, I'm just kidding. All right. Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening. I'm Mike Seville, 1105 Ottawa. Just a couple of things that I've noticed. Excuse me for that. I noticed the most important items, 10 and 11, get moved to the bottom of the agenda. I guess that's to reduce some of the opposition that's going on. And I noticed that instead of it being written plainly for people to understand, it's now got parcel number 2507101-027. It should be in plain English so people that come to the commissioner meetings and the planning meetings know what exactly is going on. Well, I want to make a point. Last time it took three votes. It seems like you guys are voting until you get the vote you want. And then it was passed on with no recommendation, the Greenfield project. I'm totally against that. Here's the consensus that I see going in Royal Oak. We have the Genesee project. We have the Phillips project. We have the Greenfield project. We have the East Harrison project. It's a, seems to be a 10, an ongoing trend to overdevelop properties with no regard to the single-family units. I need you to understand that the single-family is the core of Royal Oak. After everybody leaves, we're the ones that are usually holding the bill. Residents, when they want a variance for their private property, a lot of times they get a lot of no's and it's not allowed. It seems that when developers want a variance, that a lot of leeway is given to them, even though they know it's, it's wrong and even though the residents are against it. Here's the problem, okay? I'm a, I'm a strong union guy. I've been in many labor negotiations. When you give variances to one developer, they have a tendency to look at each other and say, hey, you did it for them, you did it for them, you did it for them. Totally against the Greenfield project. Got passed on with no recommendation and that should tell you automatically that it should be dead. Another thing is, and like one of the other residents talked about, if, if you're taking money, whatever your interest is from a developer for election campaign, it should be brought to the attention of the public and you should accuse yourself on voting on it. That's the way it should be. I mean, come on, guys. It's basic math. Thank you.
All right, who's next? Going once, going twice. All right, the auction's closed. We're going to bring the meeting back to this side of the table. All right, which brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off tonight's consent agenda for discussion? All right, Mr. Collo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item I, please.
Okay, item I. Anybody else? All right, does anyone want to make a motion on the consent agenda? With the exception of item I? Commissioner Macy?
Move approval.
A motion by Commissioner Macy, second by Commissioner Duba. Discussion? All right, with not a call for the vote on the motion that moves forward the consent agenda without I, we'll talk about that separate. All right, call for the vote. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I thought that was separate, though.
I was just saying, I just thought about that. You beat me to it. All right. So now with all those ayes, we'll talk about I. All right, Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll, sorry, I apologize to staff. I know we didn't have a chance to talk about this today. You know, I'm looking at this item and I know we've heard about the plan, potential plan to relocate the animal shelter. This is something that the staff's been working on for about a year. And I think there's a lot of good things in the mix, what could happen, what might happen. I just think, I know there's potential, the staff thinks about potentially presenting us with a little bit more of an action plan of where we are, what a new shelter might look like, some of the costs behind that before we move on to this next step of spending some more money on this project to see what the actual plan would be in kind of a more formal setting than we've had in the past.
I think I'm probably best qualified to take this. So the city commission approved the Krieger Klatt contract for architectural services in late February of this year to get the schematic drawings going. Concurrently, we are working with the city attorney's office and outside counsel on drafting a development purchase agreement with the other party. You know, roughly, the project would entail taking a building owned by this private party, splitting it into half of it, the front half would be the animal shelter, and this is that 2005 Bel Air. The, the back portion of it would remain under control of the private property owner. As we were working through the development agreement and then working with our planning and building departments, it became pretty clear that this project from a zoning perspective was much more complicated than any of us had thought. So much so that as we're building in a development agreement where you have certain outs and you have certain timelines on city entitlements being granted within time A or time B, we couldn't put anything on paper. We were literally redrawing based on direction that we were getting from our community development director and our planning director. And at, at some point, every project experiences a little bit of deal fatigue and I think the other party was feeling that as well. And so we regrouped in the summer and we said, you know, perhaps the best way of moving forward with this is to actually try to secure the entitlements first. If this needs to go through ZBA or Planning Commission, we will have the private property owner work on pushing that through. And then that solves a lot of the heavy lifting we are trying to do legally in the development agreement. And so that's where we're at right now and that's what this action item is. We have already performed survey work at the Bel Air building. We've learned more about that in terms of we're not allowed to have an outdoor dog track. We're going to have to move it inside. This is, you know, coming from our, our planning department. We're going to have to put in a firewall that we necessarily weren't looking at doing. First was two, now it's one. That's fine. We will secure these entitlements. The other portion is the, the actual animal shelter facility itself, which is part of a large DPS parcel that goes from Campbell all the way to the Matthew Hargraves Chevrolet lot line. We need to delineate a separate property parcel ID for that as we're doing with Bel Air. And so it's a lot of these steps that are taking a lot of time. We're optimistic that we may be able to bring something before the planning commission within the next three months. This work is critical for us to, to get to that point. Essentially, when you're on ZBA or Planning Commission and you're having architects and engineers bringing you plans, these are plans that we're preparing for. And, you know, that's part of the reason we requested $200,000 of the city commission and ARPA funding for soft costs to get this project to the point where we would have a development agreement. And so that's where we stand right now. Once we get this survey work done, we'll be able to have a package along with our architect who is redesigning based upon the feedback that we received from community development. And it'll go through there before we get to a development purchase agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Fen. I guess at this point, Mr. Mayor, I'd be looking for some feedback from some fellow commissioners, but, you know, we have put some, lots of energy, you know, energy into this. I think a question that this body really should consider amongst itself, and this is, you know, part of negotiation, so I don't know how that's appropriate, but, you know, is this the direction we want to continue to move forward as we invest some more money into this, this development? This project has changed quite a bit since it was first brought to us. Is there, is this the best route to move forward? Is there better property potentially to look at? Is this, is this what's going to be best for the city here? So I would want to maybe have this discussion and then consider to spend $35,000 surveying someone else's property.
It's surveying our property?
I thought it was not...
The existing DPS parcel and separating it, separating the shelter from that parcel.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Fen? Commissioner Douglas?
Well, yeah, I will just point out that some time ago, we did go to the proposed, some of us were, came, went to the proposed building and saw the designs and heard a little bit more about it, but that was not in the public eye. And I think there are, you know, people who would like to know and deserve to know more about it, at least those elements that we can reveal that are not part of a proprietary or financial negotiation between us and the seller. So is there a way we could arrange something like that at one of our next forthcoming meetings? And is the decision, is the NOAC and FROST decision essential to be done now or could it wait until we have that public discussion?
Work will not move forward, so we'll be punting the ball on, on this part of the process for at least two weeks. But yes, we can have the architect and the shelter manager come down here and explain what the vision for the new shelter is.
So, and, and since you clarified here that what we are surveying is not the prospective building, but our current building, that's probably not a bad idea anyway, even because at some point, we would, if we find even a better building, we'd still need to sell off that property. So we, we would need that information, I think.
I mean, I would think we'd want to move forward regardless because of that exact circumstance.
Yeah.
I think it would be great for, to the extent that, you know, there's some more information out there so the public knows what the professionals are talking about, that, you know, manage and run animal shelters. The primary purpose of this shelter is not a, you know, pet spot. You know, our police department, our public safety element of animal control, as well as the adaptive nature and how you manage and house animals on a temporary basis is up to the experts to really design and, and, you know, run that facility. So I, not that I question, but I mean, yes, public input on this is great, but, you know, there's limited scope of public input because it is a... know, there's limited scope of public input because it is a functionally operational public safety element first, that the experts have to, you know, design first with the safety of the animals in mind, the safety of the staff in mind, and processing as many animals and reconnecting them with their owners as possible and getting them off the streets, so they don't get hurt or they don't hurt others. So, yeah, it's gonna be beautiful, it's gonna be nice, it's gonna be something attractive, but it's functional at the core.
Commissioner Hunt.
I would like to ask, going back to Commissioner Colo's question about looking at other properties. When this project first began, there were like great ideas and grand ideas of what this particular shelter would service. The animals that are being adopted, training, some medical care, outside runs, and training for, you know, prospective owners. And now, that's kind of been limited because of what the property itself can hold. Has there been a review of other properties or a look at other properties and move of this one? Understanding that we own, the city owns part of this.
No, we have not investigated other sites. Part of the attraction of this project was that the site would be donated to the city, and so, we don't have acquisition costs, and we're using federal money to carry out the build-out. And we do have some ARPA reserve that'll help, because this will also be a lead silver building, and that's certainly on the design portion, elevated costs by about 40%. I know in speaking with Jody Ellison, the shelter manager, that there was a proposed pet boarding location adjacent, and Jody would be, she's an expert at this, but she gave me a litany of reasons why that would not work, that I didn't need to question her further on that. But we haven't independently been looking at what other properties available in the city that we may need to acquire. Simply put, financially, we're not in that position.
Well, donated property is always a good property, so. Thank you.
Commissioner Colo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I guess hearing this, I think maybe, it seems prudent to approve this $35,000 tonight. It's our property, it's a survey that we're gonna need for property that will become obsolete in the future, because we will move the animal shelter one way or another. And then, so, I propose, I'm approving this resolution tonight and directing staff to present to us the status and update facts and figures on the animal shelter at the first meeting in November.
I'd like clarity on facts and figures. We won't have a detailed budget until we get into construction drawings, but we will make sure that everybody understands what the shelter will look like, operationally, how it will function, what the current budget is.
Precisely, yeah.
And where we're at in the entitlement process.
I think that'd be a great update.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
You said I propose. You move?
I move.
Okay. A motion by Commissioner Colo, and we have a second by Commissioner Douglas. All right, discussion. All right, I'll call for the vote. All who are in favor, say "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Got all the items that were formally on the consent agenda completed. So, that brings us to item eight, which is a public hearing of assessment, special assessment paving of Masoy Road, and we have City Engineer Donahue with us here tonight.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. Tonight is the final step for the special assessment paving process of Masoy Road. This is from Tonawanda to Hampton. So, tonight is a public hearing of assessment, and this is for anyone that wants to speak on the special assessment role. After the public hearing is closed, there's no action that I need from you tonight unless for some reason you want to stop the project from progressing. Otherwise, staff will move forward with obtaining the survey and doing the design work over the winter, ideally for a 2024 construction project. And then, when the project's all done and built, we'd bring you standard resolution five to close everything out.
Before we open up the public hearing, do we have any questions for our city engineer? Okay, not seeing any questions. I'll open up the public hearing. All the same rules, a public comment apply. Does anyone here wish to speak on this item tonight at the public hearing? Not seeing any interest in speaking at this public hearing. I will close the public hearing and bring the meeting to this side of the table. As the city engineer said, there's no action that's needed to be taken on this side, so we will wait for you to come back. Ms. Donahue, thank you. All right, this brings us to item nine, review of boards and commissions. I see Ms. Barkman is ready to go.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So, we have two items for boards and commissions, so this was a part of the review process that we started quite a few months ago now. But this, the first piece is the creation of the Aging in Place and Older Adult Advisory Board. So, this aims to bring, kind of separate out from Parks Recreation and the Senior Services Advisory Board, the senior services portion, and make that its own board and commission again, that would provide advice around the Aging in Place Plan as well as the senior center. And that board would be staffed by myself as well as the senior center coordinator, who also worked with me on the Aging in Place Task Force as well. So, that would be that portion of the board where this gets kind of a little bit murky is in separating out Parks and Recreation and Senior Services. So, there's a Parks and Recreation Board that's an ordinance, and a long time ago, the old Senior Services Advisory Board was folded into that board through a resolution. And so, the resolutions that you have this evening, complete the resolutions for the first reading of the, creating the new board, as well as a portion to help separate out that function and essentially restore the Parks and Recreation and Senior Services Advisory Board to being just Parks and Recreation. Microphone is like right there for questions about this. So, if there's any questions, I'll take them.
All right, a few municipal gymnastics there. All right, let's, Commissioner Douglas.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. A couple of things, and I spoke with staff about this. Item number 4.5E says that a role of this commission would be to accept contributions for any person or agency. And I don't see how that, I mean, that's an action step, it's not an advisory role, and I don't see how we could, how a volunteer body can, could accept contributions, or even assess the appropriateness of those contributions. That seems to me to be a staff role. So, I would ask my fellow commissioners to consider striking item E from, or 4.5E. 4.6B, almost all of our, many of our committees here in the city, including the city commission, have as a rule that a motion may be passed with a majority of a quorum, and yet, what is described here is requiring a majority of the total body of the organization. And I just, I would recommend, or ask my fellow commissioners to consider, my recommendation that we make that a majority of a quorum, not a majority of the entire body.
Good catch.
Oh, and let's talk about changing the name of this to just the Older Adults Advisory Board, because otherwise, it's a mouthful. I'm doing this for the city clerk, sure.
Okay, we got three recommendations on the table. Commissioner Macy?
Yes, thank you so much for bringing this to us. Miss Barkman, we're excited to have this here, I think. Good catches by Commissioner Douglas. I do, I said this at the meeting of the Parks and Recreation Advisory where this was presented, I do think that there should be a city commissioner on this. I think not putting a city commissioner on the Human Rights Commission was a conscious choice based on what the role of that board is and how we want to be an independent body. But for all the other boards that we have, the city commissioner liaisons to, it just seems really important to have that voice who's bringing and showing that our investment is well in this issue. So, I would recommend adding the commissioner to this body as well.
Anybody else? Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with the previous two commissioners. One thing I caught is that the bylaws are approved by this board on our other boards. The bylaws are recommended by the advisory committee, and then they are approved by the city commission. We recently did that with the traffic committee. I think we changed their meaning in time by bylaws. So, I just reflect that the bylaws are proposed and then approved by this body.
Okay. So, yeah. Commissioner Dubac?
No, those are well-thought-out suggestions. I'll move for approval with the amendment suggestion by Commissioner Douglas, Commissioner Macy, and Commissioner Colo.
Okay, but a motion by Commissioner Dubac, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, are we making those changes and approving this on first reading? Is that your intention, Commissioner Dubac?
Is this first reading?
Yeah, that's what it is.
That was the motion, too, to approve on first reading with the changes which will be presented back to the commission at the next meeting.
The current resolution states first reading.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to point out, too, that when we're changing for Commissioner Macy's recommendation, we'll have to change how we stagger the remaining six individuals who'll be on this. I believe there was a staggering that was written into this. Two will have a three-year term, et cetera, et cetera. So, we'll have to change that, that language inside this ordinance. So, that's first reading. But just in general, this is, you know, great. I mean, this has been something we've been working towards for quite a while now, at the pace at which staff could handle. There's a lot of work that goes into making these ordinances, making these boards, staffing these committees, and making sure that we have the best resources available. So, I think that this is great that we finally have this.
All right, anybody else? All right, I'll call for the vote. All who are in favor, say "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, back to the agenda here. All right.
Number two, so this is the first reading of the attendance ordinance. So, as you may recall from our discussions around the attendance ordinance, the feedback that we were receiving from our boards and commissions members indicated that our current process was creating some challenges, because it often left people off of a board for a period of time that they weren't really sure how they were, when they would be reappointed. We were often reappointing the same person, so we were moving them and short-staffing a board in the process as well. And so, the direction the commission provided was to kind of flip that around and make it so that the boards, if someone were to miss still two in a row or three within a year, so we, you wanted to keep that threshold, we would not automatically remove them from the board, but still follow through with the process that they would have to get it, they would get a note from the clerk and their staff liaison, and then they would have to respond, and then the appointments committee could then take action to remove someone from the board. And so, that's kind of what you see in front of you this evening.
Let's go to Commissioner Hunt.
Thank you, Ms. Barkman, for this policy as well. I'm a bit concerned that it doesn't necessarily provide some sort of notice or allowing the committee member to provide some sort of notice in the event that they are going to be absent. The way it reads is, you know, you have two absences, and then you have to go through the rehabilitative process of talking to the clerk and, you know, saying your piece as to why you were absent two or three times. So, is there a possibility of adding in something that allows for someone who may be going out on a medical procedure and may not necessarily be able to make a couple of meetings without fear of being kicked off?
So, that is language we can look at. There absolutely, I think, should be some options for that. That was something that we also had discussed with this process. We just didn't have as clear direction on kind of where you guys wanted to go on that, I think. But that's absolutely something that we can look at. The kind of idea would be that is, like, my board member would still communicate with me as the staff liaison, that, hey, I'm not gonna be at the meeting on a regular basis, and the staff liaison is still working with the clerk's office, so when they meet that threshold, you're still kind of queuing them. But I think that having that ability for them to be proactive would be really great, because there are a lot of situations where people know they're going to be absent, whether it's a medical or a family situation, or things that life happens.
So, I'm not quite sure what that language would look like, but I think that is something that at least I would like to see and add it to this, this policy.
Commissioner Colo?
Yeah, to the point, Krishan, I think we kind of talked about that a little, a couple, whenever we talked about this. I think one concern might be the, who would, who would determine what a valid excuse is, right? We don't want to send it to each committee, since it's, you know, 20 different bodies, right? And we don't want each body to have a different standard for what that might be. So, I wonder if it, if this process as it stands now, by going back, you know, if you missed two, then it's sent to the appointments committee, which is made up of this body, that someone just says, I'm sick, I can't make it, I'll be back in three months, that would probably, would that satisfy what we're looking for here? Or could someone preemptively send that note through their staff liaison? Please let the appointments committee know, I have this, please excuse my absence for this reason.
My thought is it would go through the staff liaison. I feel like it puts an onus on the person if they are out for, you know, some excused reason. I mean, I just don't feel like, oh, coming to a meeting is not a, you know, good excuse. But if someone's going through a medical procedure and then having to go through the clerk and explain the reasons why she, you know, he or she was not able to come to the meetings, I think that puts too much of an onus on them after the fact. Perhaps going through the clerk, or I'm sorry, the staff liaison. My thoughts would be, would be the initial step.
To clarify, I don't, I did not intend to say it's up to the board itself to excuse or not excuse, or however we want to phrase that, it would, it would be through the appointments committee that you would be providing that notice.
If we're done with this issue and feel like we've given guidance to staff, my other question is, so let us say someone misses the prescribed number of meetings, and the appointments committee says, that's okay, you can stay on the committee, and then they miss another meeting. Does the appointments committee decision reset the whole process, and they now have two consecutive or three total meetings that they can miss? Or what, so what happens when they miss another meeting? And our city attorney just raised his hand.
I believe the way the ordinance is currently proposed and written would not restart that attendance clock, that anything in addition to the two in a, two consecutive or three, you'd be reaching the three in a calendar year, would trigger another letter and another review by the attendance committee. That's how I interpret it right now. I mean, we can certainly solidify the language one way or the other, depending on how the commission feels about that. If that's something you want to have reset, we certainly can word that accordingly in the ordinance. But right now, it would not reset, it would be another review by the attendance committee.
Yeah, I'd like to see us, the others agree, I'd like to see us make that perfectly clear.
I mean, I'll just add, I've always had a little bit of heartache, even from the beginning when we did this. I appreciate the approach, I just think that, even when we did this many years ago, that was a little, I don't wanna say heavy-handed, but a little administrative, a little not warm. And I think that the appointments committee has the ability to appoint people they believe are good for the position. Those people go in with great intentions, and they may have personal issues, they may have all of a sudden work issues, they didn't expect kid issues, and things happen, and sometimes, you know, that conversation needs to happen to say, hey, you've missed a lot of meetings, probably time to, you know, maybe step aside, or it's temporary. Like, hey, you know what, I had a, you know, an issue, I was ill, whatever it may be. But I think the appointments committee can always decide to leave that, you know, if you only have one applicant, and that person's already on six boards, you might leave, you know, that position open, as opposed to putting someone that's on six boards already. Not that anyone's on six boards, but I'm just trying to make the example. So, sometimes, having a vacancy is an appointment itself, right? So, to me, it seems like this is way harder than it needs to be. It's, our liaison should be taking attendance, or it should be in the board minutes. If people are missing, that should go into some sort of database, and the appointments committee should see and be triggered to say, committee should see and be triggered to say, okay, by the way, even though this person had a three-year appointment or two-year appointment, they're six months in, they've already hit the absence threshold, do you want to keep them on board or not? And if they keep them on board and they get more, get more absences, then the next appointments meeting, they can say, all right, we're going to replace that individual. And the individual has every opportunity to be notified that this is going to take place. There's an appointments, you can show up to the appointments meeting, or you can write them a letter, or the liaison can write something. But it seems to me like the rigidity of it seems a little bit, you know, for volunteer positions. I mean, I don't even know if I would be this harsh with some of my employees as far as their rigidity, and they're getting paid. So, I mean, I get the concept, I support the idea of making sure people know when they sign up to volunteer in their community, it's serious, and people depend on them, and, you know, we need volunteers, and we, and they have a ability to contribute, and we need them there. Just always seemed to be a little bit, when we did this, a little too formal, a little bit too technical. It seems there's a smoother way to do it.
Commissioner Dubb?
I appreciate what you're saying, Mayor. I disagree. I agree it's a volunteer position, but it's a position where what we've had before we had the original ordinance was a situation where there was really no formal process. It was kind of on the chair of the committee or the staff to maybe flag for the clerk that someone hasn't been to six meetings in a row. The clerk would have to track that person down, try and find out if they want to be on the committee. And without any actual rules or governance around this, we're holding seats that someone may not want, or maybe something's happened in their life where they can't attend, for committee appointments that we have dozens of people waiting for that really want to serve. And I think clarity around this process and, you know, some sort of absolute expectation of what you're going to do, what you're not going to do, and when it's time to leave is helpful both for the volunteers and for the city, and makes those committees more productive. And also inevitably would open up spots for folks who are waiting in line who really want to volunteer for one of these spots. So I think there should be clarity, there should be clear lines around the expectation and how the process works.
No, I don't disagree. And I think that's what I said, is I think there should be something, but should it be kicked down to the appointments committee with an attendance report and the discretion is taken at that level when the appointments committee meets? As opposed to being so rigid on the rules and saying, okay, well, it's two, and now it's three, well, the person's getting chemotherapy. You know what I mean? Like, if it gets back down and these are the folks that have met the threshold, the appointments committee knows, okay, well, you're going to appoint two positions, but now we're going to appoint four because two people are on that list, and oh, by the way, we can decide at that moment in time to keep them on the board or to move on. As opposed to going through a larger circle, I guess, is what I'm suggesting.
Do we hear from Commissioner Macy yet? Commissioner Macy and then Commissioner Cole.
I'd always let you go first.
Yeah, and I think I'm with Commissioner Dubbuck on this one. I feel like we're acting as if the volunteers have like some kind of a right or property right to being on this committee, but what we really have is the community of our Eloke has a right to have these committees staffed and making good decisions for them. And so, yes, we don't want to kick someone out because they have a medical emergency or something, something changes in their life, but if something changes in their life such that they're going to miss four or five meetings in a year, like, maybe it makes sense for them to hand that off at that time and they can reapply again another, another time. It just, it feels a lot like we're being very protective of those, of those positions when we have to think about the responsibility we have to keep those positions staffed and so that there's people on these community, people who are in the community who want to serve, are able to serve, and are able to bring their wisdom to our Eloke. It's not like you get it once and then you get to keep it for life. It's, it is, it is a service role, and we need to keep in mind what their, what the purpose of it is.
I think everybody's saying that. But does it have to be so robust to involve the clerk and, you know, formalizing letters and things of that nature? Or is it a notice to the individual that you've met this threshold, the appointments committee will be meeting on this date, you know, send a letter or plead your case? And then the appointments committee can decide at their discretion because they're appointing people out of the gate?
If I may, Mayor?
Yes.
I think that's exactly what the ordinance does, so.
Maybe I misunderstood in the way I read it.
Yeah, that's, that's what the intent of the ordinance.
Because I see the appointed board and committee has 15 days to return to the city clerk an explanation and all of these things, all these timing thresholds.
I got you. Thank you for that. Understood.
Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, I agree with Commissioners Dubbuck and Macy also, and I definitely see what you're saying. I think that some of this is, you know, there's a little bit of rigidity to it, 15 days, but that is, if, once you're notified, you have 50 days to tell the clerk, no, I actually do want to keep this position. And then on top of that, it's sent, you're not automatically kicked off at this point. You're just asked after your second absence, hey, what's going on? Why aren't you here? That's the first question that's asked. And then that explanation's passed along to the appointments committee, which can just, there's one of three decisions that can be made. They can all say, you know what, the explanation given to us is fine, we don't need to meet on this, person can stay on. Two, we're going to have a hearing, this is something that can have a hearing. Or three, definitely kicked off. I think it's important to note, the appointments committee met in January last year and then met in August. So there's a long gap here, you know, that's potential for eight months where there is no meeting of this committee. So what this ordinance, as it's written today, does is kicks, kicks in like, okay, someone has missed some time, they've told us, we'd like to continue serving, here's our explanation. Then the appointments committee would meet ad hoc to come up with that. So I think it takes out some of that bluntness of, you're absolutely kicked off. In fact, it lets people, it gives them a runway, lets them explain what's going on. As Commissioner Macy said, I mean, there's a lot of work that these boards and committees do, and when they're down a person, it does hamper some of that, those quality results. So I could see adding a provision, like Commissioner Hunt said, maybe for an excuse absence, like, let's look at these long-term absences and see, or, you know, short-term medical stuff going on, like, maybe there's a mechanism to add that. But I think that this really, as we talked about this last time, it's funny, I think we had this exact same conversation about six months ago with all the same positions. I think we're trying to lessen that runway, make it a little bit easier for people to continue to serve.
If I may. Okay.
Yes, Ms. Barkman.
Maybe a good path tonight is to table this, and we can bring it back. We can look at a provision that brings in kind of, not, I don't, we'll figure, Nick, I will figure out the language, but kind of gives that, that advance notice opportunity for folks and builds in flexibility, maybe for the appointments committee to kind of say, we'd like to revisit, you know, continued absences, or yes, this person is, you may be having a child, we know they're going to be gone for two months, and then their intent is to return or something, and, and you kind of want to restart that clock. Maybe we can look for a middle ground there that maybe would work for everybody.
Well, per term, you get one reset. You know what I mean? You get the two or three, you get one reset, and then, you know, if it happens again, then...
We can figure.
You know, it's another... I don't know, I just feel like, like, that's a perfect example, like maternity leave. You could get a really awesome board member on Parks and Rec or something, and they need to take a month or two or three off, and then, you know, it's like, all of these things, like, you know, it gets confusing for them, like, oh, my goodness. But if it's like, oh, so-and-so is on paternity leave, and, you know, they missed three, they're on paternity leave, then the appointments committee can say, well, we'll hold for another month, it sounds like they're going to be back in a month. Easy peasy. But, you know, I just, there's, there's a little bit of, I like the idea of the appointments committee having more discretion as opposed to less discretion, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yes, Mr. Barkman.
So I, certainly, I think we have clear notice on prior notice, some mechanism to provide for that. I'm not clear as to the direction the entire commission or a majority of the commission as far as whether they want to reset or not after an initial amount of absences occurs in one year and then, and then a second or subsequent absence after that. I heard an idea from the mayor that was a possibility. I heard we want clarity in that language. As I stated right now, it's written as not a reset. So I just want to make sure I have clarity so we can draft the appropriate language that this commission wants, and I'm not really gotten a majority on the same page. I'm not, I guess I'm confused.
It's a great question. Maybe one idea is that the appointments committee can decide if those are excused, and if they're excused, then they go off the record for the term. And if they're not excused, they stay on the record and, you know, could trigger, but I don't know. Just an idea.
Commissioner Cole?
Okay, so I see, like, once, let's use an example, someone's pregnant, they miss, have a baby one month, they miss the next month, then they're excused, we excuse them. Now, they're back on the board, but the kid's six, so they miss another one. I think that's fair to reset it at that point, so they have two more absences for the rest of the year. Look, we're also probably dealing, like, we're spending a lot of time depicting something that is going to happen once in probably the next decade, and most likely will want the person to continue on the committee.
Most people are honorable, and if they have a problem, they resign.
So maybe a mechanism that gives discretion to the appointment committee to determine whether or not the excused absences are, constitutes like a one reset or not, is an idea?
Yeah.
And again, that's based on the appointment committee's review of the explanation, and then, then the subsequent absence, then they can determine, well, that's valid, we'll give it one.
Somebody comes in and says, I had beer league softball those three nights, and it was a problem, then I'm good to go now. Maybe that, maybe the appointments committee says, yeah, well, you know, probably not a commitment you should have signed up for, and, you know, that's different than, you know, paternity leave or the scenario that Commissioner Cole gave. But I think it's going to be rare, but, I almost called you Commissioner House, City Clerk House.
I just wanted to bring up, that's why the ordinance was changed in the first place many, many moons ago, is because what's considered excused, what's considered unexcused, you're putting that on the staff liaison. That's why the ordinance was changed way back when. So it's a lot easier how it is now to hear excused and unexcused, I kind of cringe, so...
Well, I guess what I'm saying is not excused at the staff level or staff liaison, but the appointments board could decide to say, those three no longer count against you because it was an extenuating circumstance, and therefore the clock is, or the, the absences are reset because you had a child. And now, you know, moving forward, if your kid gets sick, you're not going to be back in this position two months later. But you still only have a couple, two, three, that you have to manage. So it wouldn't be a staff issue, it would be at the discretion of the appointments committee to reset it or not. Just a thought. I mean, I don't know. To me, I don't know that we've had a huge issue with people not being present on the boards and sticking around anyways, but most of them resign if they have problems, but...
Commissioner Dubb?
That just hasn't been my experience on various boards. We'll, we'll go months without hearing from someone and try and reach out to find out what's going on, and then just have to decide if they're on or they're off. That's, that was the whole purpose of establishing this policy. We've had plenty of issues with that. Some people would just, you know, leave for Florida for the winter and not mention that they're going to be gone for three meetings. That's, I think that's why we're, you're saying we're putting the onus on the person, but to some extent it should be to say, yes, I do want to be on this board, yes, I had an extenuating circumstance, but I would like to remain. And then we're just trying to formalize that, that we ask the question at a certain interval, and they respond.
Whatever you guys want to do. I am not passionate. I just don't, you know, I just want to make sure we, anybody that's signed up to serve, we treat them with dignity, and we don't, especially, I'm not thinking about the people that go to Florida, I'm thinking about the people that have other health issues, I guess is where mine's at, my mind's at. So fair point on that, but I'm mostly directing my comments towards people that I assume have extenuating circumstances.
You want to bring it back, or do you guys want to put a motion on the table?
Do we need a... Yeah, I'll move to direct staff to consider the comments at the table and bring us back a revised ordinance as soon as it's feasible.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, that's our second, second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion? All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Thank you, Ms. Barkman. Mr. Murphy is jumping up on deck here to talk about the approval of proposed First Amendment Plan Unit Development at 2:30 East Harrison Avenue. Mr. Murphy?
In September of last year, the city commission rezoned the subject property to planned unit development, or PUD, to accommodate a multiple-family housing development. And the petitioner is proposing some changes that we're unable to administratively approve. They're seeking an amendment to the existing PUD to accommodate a variety of things. One of the chief items is the, the top floor or the fourth floor of the building included, I'll call it, community room, and then it had space outside for HVAC components, a green roof, et cetera. And they're proposing to add an additional four units to the structure itself. Those four units would be accommodated on that top floor. So it increases the number of units from 32 to 36. They're also proposing to, to move the drive entrance from along Delaware Avenue to along East Harrison Avenue. And that also changes the interior layout of the parking on the ground floor, which they can detail, and we can look at a floor plan shortly during their presentation. The number of parking spaces increases from 42 to 47. It keeps the same parking ratio, which is 1.3 parking spaces per unit. They do have slight modifications to number of trees, also related to the solar panels, the location of a generator, EV charging stations, as well as the green roof. We had administratively, earlier this year, we had administratively approved some minor changes to the, to the agreement, but these are substantial and necessitate an amendment to the agreement. So the petitioner is here tonight to go through the proposal. We can highlight some of those things on the screen that show side-by-side comparisons. And if you are in support, there is a suggested motion to, for approval to amend the PUD agreement.
Hey, questions for Mr. Murphy? Commissioner Dubb?
Thank you, Mayor. So I see they're proposing reducing the size of the green roof, reducing the number of trees planted. Are there changes here that would offset or replace the value of those benefits which were core consideration in original approval?
I think they're slight. I don't think they're that significant, but we'll certainly let the petitioner express that to you.
Okay. But there are, so there are gains where there's losses on the sustainability front, or it's just loss?
I would classify them as a reduction.
Reduction. All right. Thanks.
All right. I asked the petitioner to come up here and talk about your changes and what you got on.
How are you guys doing? Thank you for having us here this evening. My name is Lawrence. I have Ray with me here as well. So we feel that really the core elements of the project haven't changed. We feel like the changes are slightly, are fairly moderate, really, like, the major change is the four additional units that were added on the fourth floor, which reduces some of the open terrace patio, which we feel is, it's the ratio of rentable space compared to common area space is now more in line with other multifamily developments. It's about 70% of rentable space compared to 30% of open common area space. The green roof was a very slight reduction. We're still maintaining the solar, keeping the solar panels, we're still keeping the EV charging stations. Overall, the changes were fairly modest. Our core, our, our goal was basically just to gain additional units without compromising any of the other elements of the development. We still kept the parking ratio, we still kept, like I said, the solar panels, the green roof, et cetera. We just needed a way to add additional units without any major changes.
Questions? Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and, you know, thank you for being here tonight. You know, I'm looking at Mr. Murphy, page 18 of the PDF, and this is the penthouse rooftop plan. And I guess I'm just wondering, you know, pegging back off of Commissioner Dubbuck's statements about, you know, we have taken away about 550 some square feet of green space, reduced some trees on the property. And I'm wondering if, looking at the plan, the rooftop, it's not that page, actually, it's... it's, maybe we're looking at different PDFs, but it's a little bit further down, Mr. Murphy? Yeah, this page. So I see on one side of the site, we have off 50-some solar panels, is there any consideration of potentially putting some more solar panels on this space, replacing some green roof on this space potentially? You know, can you add some more green infrastructure into this, you know, essentially blank canvas here to kind of beef up what we've lost?
Ray Phillips, the Creative Cloud Architects.
Just for some clarity, the total green space that was reduced was 260 square feet, I think it's in the PowerPoint presentation that we prepared, which is about 7% of, of what the overall was. But potentially adding some additional solar panel or, you know, a green roof, I guess that's a possibility. But the main component, everything is remaining the same with, except the 260 square foot loss, but we did have a conversation with our civil engineer, it's not going to impose any additional impact on the storm system, it'll all be handled with the underground detention as well. I appreciate that. And actually, I'm looking at a report also, our report says we went from 3,690 square feet to 3,140, it's about for the green roof. Yeah, I think that did not account for the canopy that wraps around on the first floor at the entry, so that's, that's where the additional... Not understanding, though, you know, there's been some changes, I, you know, and for you also having the, you know, this is, you know, we talked about the community benefits package, right, you know, this is a give-and-take, it's not necessarily a dollar-for-dollar replacement of what's going on, and a drop-for-drop replacement of stormwater, we're trying to exceed here. So I guess, you know, adding some more photocells on this rooftop here is a long-term impact, will reduce your energy costs, you know, there's some cost recovery there, and with Inflation Reduction Act, they're kind of handing out money to do this also right now, so...
If it's, yeah, if it's architecturally feasible to do so, if it'll fit, yeah, absolutely.
That was one of my considerations. Commissioner Douglas.
The entrance to your garage, which was previously on Delaware, a more lightly-traveled street, is now going to be on Harrison, a much more heavily-traveled street as it's an important pathway into that whole neighborhood. What safety features will you have on that door to protect passersby, pedestrians especially?
I believe we've done this on a, on a couple of other projects that are closer to downtown, using, utilizing mirrors and some alarm or visual device that would notify pedestrians that would be crossing the sidewalk of a car entering or exiting.
Yeah, I'd like to see you have both visual and audible signals there.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Hunt.
I see that you've added a generator that's going to go along Delaware. Have you looked at any more environmentally-friendly options than a generator? I'm assuming this would be a gas-type generator that's burning some sort of fuel.
Yep, yep. So originally, we looked at putting it on the roof. This is a structure made almost entirely out of wood on the upper floors, so to support that generator, you would then have to introduce steel to support, because it is pretty heavy, so the most common place to put it is on the ground if you have the space, and then screening it appropriately.
I'm thinking of something that's more environmentally-friendly than using a fuel-generated mechanism for, I mean, I know a generator's a generator, and you're not going to get anything that absolutely matches it at this point, but has there been any other options that you've considered?
We haven't done anything else in any of our other projects, I think there are potentially some other solutions out there, but we have not explored that on, on any of our, any of our projects. I think a backup generator is typically, or a backup source of power for the life safety aspects of the building is what is needed. We can do some research, but I don't know if there's anything out there that is typically, you know, accepted on projects like this.
Commissioner Dubb.
All right, so I mean, I don't want to, like, put you guys through the wringer here, but, so there's multiple times in essence we've had the community benefits in place, you know, we approve something based on what's proposed with an understanding of the community benefit, and then something comes back that inevitably increases the value for the developer, and as modest as the changes might be, decrease the value that, that we saw for the community. Can you convince me that that's not what's happening here?
We're, we're open to any other suggestions of, of community benefits we can, we can include in this project. Ultimately, we, to really, with, to make it economically feasible, we wanted those four additional units, because the rest of the space was previously just open terrace space. And we, and we also understand and value the importance of including the key elements of community benefits that we had previously, that had previously been approved. And we feel that most of those are included, with a slight reduction in green roof space, but if there's other suggestions, we're definitely open for it.
Yeah, I think, I mean, this was approved a year ago, my understanding is that there's probably been some economics that have changed since then to make the project feasible, like the petitioner said. Sounds like you made a fair attempt, sounds like we're down to 260 square feet or so of what's really different from what you had before. My question would be, now, green space is obviously more preferred, but, and I don't know when you did your, did you do any borings on this property? Was it clay or sand, or...
I, I do not recall what the soil borings came back as.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, I believe we did, but I don't know, I don't know the results.
Okay, because, you know, there's always an opportunity to, I mean, it helps with stormwater, but it's not as good as a green roof. But it helps, you know, if you put a permeable, you know, strip in your parking lot, like around, you know, if the soil is right, it's a great opportunity to put pavers in, in some areas, you know, to make up for that space. It helps keep water in the ground, and it doesn't go in the detention, which is, which is where we want it. If it's all clay and wet, it's a little harder, but if it's 270, 300, or 500 square feet, whatever you can do, maybe even more, you know, it's certainly an ecological benefit because that water doesn't get processed, right? So there's an idea there. But I, I mean, I, I empathize with, with the modest changes, you know, but if, if you have a solution for 260 square feet, that would be probably a really good thing. Commissioner Dubb.
Second, this might actually be a question for staff, so seeing that the tree reduction from nine to five, that would then trigger our tree ordinance, but the language in the report says, could, would potent, sorry, would potential, would increase potential tree replacement fee that could be assessed by the city commission from 4,200 to 6,800? So, is that, are you saying you need direction from us on that to trigger that fee?
It's up to you as to whether you want to assess that fee, or whether you're comfortable with the number of, the reduction in the number of trees that you see on the proposed amendment.
So it would be my inclination to assess that fee in total, would you be comfortable with that?
Yeah, that's, that's no problem.
Okay. Because that would then put more dollars in our tree fund, let's put more trees around the city if there's not, if they're not going to be specifically on this property.
Understood.
Commissioner Douglas.
I believe this project also has an affordable housing requirement, does it not?
Two units.
So that's another community benefit that we did negotiate for, that they will still be honoring on our behalf. I will say that, as long as they're willing to pay the tree replacement fee, which will probably amounts to a month's rent on their penthouse, and I, I find the reduction in green roof to be negligible, I'm not going to hang them out to dry for a couple of hundred square feet. Do we need my suggestion about the safety features on the garage door? Do we need to articulate that here?
It's appropriate to add that to the approval memo that you have, the suggested memo that you have, yes.
All right, so I'm going to take a swing at this, I'm going to move, let me find it here, move approval of the revision to the planned unit development imposing the tree replacement fee as described by staff, and requiring both, requiring mirrors and audio and visual warnings on the garage door.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second?
If you had solar, I'm in.
They've got...
Is there a second?
I have a new motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Macy?
Okay.
Discussion on this motion. Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Ms. Barron, I'd like to move to amend this motion to include solar on the roof, as the petitioner has expressed his willingness to add some additional solar where feasible on the rooftop, so I'd like to add that to our plan also.
We have a proposed amendment to the motion.
Actually, that would be technically a substitute motion at this point, if, unless the mover of the original motion accepts that proposed amendment, so...
It's a substitute motion.
Well, it would be if, unless the mover incorporates that into the original motion, the request.
Why can't you amend a motion?
You can't amend a motion?
The maker of the motion can.
No, anybody can amend a motion.
That's not the rules we play by.
Yeah, I didn't come up with that. I just don't know if there's enough clarity in the motion on the table.
Would you like some more clarity before you, before this dies? What kind of clarity do you want? I got clarity all day in my head.
How many solar panels? If it's feasible, if it's feasible, then is it 20, then, because here's the, here's the question, you do, you know, you give a, a vague number, you give a vague, like, agreement, and then they come back and they say, okay, I can put one panel, but I can put, I can quadruple the panels, but then that's way out of scope for the change that, you know, they've proposed, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So you're really deviating from your, from your previous approval if you had to quadruple the amount of solar panels, because it's feasible, you know what I mean? There's no definitive...
I guess without negotiating here at the table, I'd like staff to make that approval. What, we, we gave them the direction to add additional solar, and staff can approve or deny what that comes back as.
I would suggest that it be quantifiable. We've had projects approved recently with specific number and kilowatt, total kilowatt, kilowatts generated, and proposals that have, permits that have been brought in show the same number, not the same kilowatts. And we've had to have that very challenging conversation of, of reminding developers of their commitment to not just the number of panels, but the, the quality associated with them as well. So I, I beg of you not to just add the number, a number, an additional number, please.
Time to sum up our kilowatt hours.
Support.
Good luck getting that down.
All right, so what I understand, there's an amendment now to the original motion to add a requirement to get 10% more kilowatt hour.
Yeah.
Verbatim.
That's what you people told me I had to say.
Okay. Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I, I think this is a, a token move, I mean, at this point, they don't even, I mean, you know, this is a conceptual plan, they haven't bought their solar panels, they haven't ordered them, they haven't figured out how they're going to direct that power to the building as a whole, and I just think dictating this is arbitrary, and I will be voting against the amendment.
Everything Commissioner Douglas said, I agree with, and I think that the one challenge we have is, the issue isn't a reduction in solar panels, it was a reduction of 260 square feet of rain garden, I think Commissioner Dubb's idea with the tree, $6,800 tree levy will far make up for that, you know, insignificant amount of space lost in order to, you know, help tackle some of the housing needs we have in our community. Commissioner Macy.
I totally agree that it's not doing the replacement that we're looking for, but it is a community benefit lost and community benefit gained, it's totally arbitrary, I think we all saw how unbelievably arbitrary it was. But, you know, I, I feel better having a number than nothing, because one of the things I was going to say is, if, you know, it sounds like staff has already been able to make some adjustments to the PUD, even then this was so significant that they brought it back here, but at this point, if there are any more changes to anything that we consider a community benefit, I sort of want staff to bring even the smaller changes back to us, I don't want anything more administratively approved in that area, because I feel like we're making concessions right now and trying to balance it out. And so I just worry about what Commissioner Dubb was saying, is that we approve these things, and then they chip away, and they chip away, and we, you know, we end up with something different than we agreed to in the first place.
All right. Commissioner Collo.
Yeah, so, you know, yes, it was 10%, it was arbitrary, although it was, I think, 70% reduction in green space, so that's where the number eventually came from, but, you know, like Commissioner Macy said, we've lost some community benefits, this is putting some back in, benefit that the petitioner is willing to do, and this is just good for the community, you know, the green trees, we're replacing trees that have been lost already, so this is just, once again, getting us back to the same places where we want to be with this project, where the project wants to be, this, this is, a lot of good benefits are coming out of this project too, so that's something we want to keep going, so that's why I'm supporting this.
All right, I'll call for a vote on the amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No. Uh, I hear two no's, and four ayes. Okay.
You guys were the no's.
You were the two no's.
Who voted, who voted how?
Planning commissioners were the no's.
People that do this, you know, every month.
Yeah. Idiots.
Part of order. Okay, so now we have 10% kilowatt hours, which I don't even know, do we know what the kilowatt hours are right now for the project?
Not off the top of my head. I do believe that solar panels are providing 30% of the power for the common areas of the building, I believe that that's, that's what we currently have designed.
Okay, so now they'll do 33%. Okay. All right, and then with this motion now amended, it also includes the $6,800 levy on the tree reduction, as well as the safety equipment or safety measures going out onto Harrison. All right, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to number 11, which is a planning commission recommendation, planned unit development rezoning of parcel number 25-07101027, southeast corner of Greenfield and West 13 Mile Road, first reading. Mr. Murphy.
The site is a vacant piece of property on Greenfield Road, it's just south of West 13 Mile Road, it's in the city's multiple-family residential zoning district, which, under the current standards, would allow for three residential units, and the petitioner is seeking tonight for a first reading to rezone the property to planned unit development with the associated development agreement for 10 dwelling units. They are proposing 16 parking spaces, the standard for a residential dwelling unit is two parking spaces per unit, their calculation or ratio comes out to 1.6 parking spaces per unit. They do have some other deviations from zoning ordinance standards, such as the depth of parking spaces, each parking spaces, each parking space is required to be at least nine feet in width and 20 feet in depth, the proposed parking spaces are 18 feet in depth, and the drive aisle, the center drive aisle to access the parking spaces measures 15 feet, and it's required under the ordinance to be 16 feet. The setback of the building is 15 feet, approximately 15 feet from the property line, under the ordinance, the standard is 25, and the petitioner is, they would be removing all of the trees on site, in which they've had a certified arborist, and the city's arborist has also verified that the trees are, are in diseased or deteriorated condition, and so they're asking for a waiver from the standard to replace that in equal, or to pay the, the fee associated with, with it, which would total $36,000 if the city commission did apply that fee. The petitioner was at the planning commission's August and September planning commission agendas, meetings, and the, at the August meeting, the item was postponed, at the September meeting, there were six of the seven planning commission members in the... the seven planning commission members in attendance. There was a motion to approve, and it failed a three-to-three vote. There was a motion to deny, and it also failed a three-to-three vote. There was a unanimous vote, however, to send it forward to you tonight without a recommendation. So the petitioner is providing, because it's a PUD, they have looked at the, at your community benefits guidelines, and they are proposing some items such as solar panels, purveyed pavers, a rain garden, and EV charging stations. Those are some of the items that you have listed on your community benefits checklist that they can speak to a little further. You do have some criteria associated with reviewing and potentially approving planned unit developments. This is the first reading because it's an amendment to the zoning ordinance, the map associated with the zoning ordinance. And there are several different options available to you tonight, which I think we can discuss that once you've had a dialogue with the petitioner and have a full understanding of the project.
Questions for Mr. Murphy. Commissioner Hunt.
Thank you. I'm looking at the opinion from the city's arborist that indicates that the American elm is showing signs of decline of the Dutch elm disease, and this is if you know, but that there are two other elms that will soon have that disease. Do you know if there was any way of saving those two elms, or do you have that information?
I'm not aware of that. Perhaps the petitioner can highlight that, can highlight that to you. But I, sorry, I don't remember that detail off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
All right. More questions for Mr. Murphy? Petitioner here tonight, come up and tell us a little bit about the project and what you're trying to do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the city commission. My name is Dennis Cowan with the law firm of Clunkin and Coon, and I'm representing Baker Properties LLC. Our owner, Rudy Kachet, is here this evening, along with Dorian Moore and Mark Nikita from Archive Design, which is our design team, and we'll be glad to answer as many questions as we can. We don't have the certified arborists with us, and I don't pretend to be one. But we'll, I'll address that in a moment. First of all, a little bit about Mr. Kachet. First of all, he was born and raised here in Royal Oak. He was a proud graduate of Lockman, Churchill, and Kimball, and now lives here in his single-family home and is looking forward to the opportunity to do a modest, two-story, 10-unit, multi-family project here on Greenfield just south of 13 Mile Road. This is a classic infill project, and infill is basically, say, it's the property left over after everybody else has developed. And I do want to bring to your attention, I gave you a little Google Earth picture with my letter, and it shows that from Greenfield, all the way from Webster, which is 12 and 1/2, all the way up to 13 Mile and Greenfield, and then all the way over to Beaumont, now Corwell campus, every property on the street is developed, except this 120-foot frontage. That's the leftover, which, i.e. the infill project that we're proposing. And as has been mentioned by Mr. Murphy, infill projects require many times a little bit of assistance, and we're asking for that. But we think we're also providing community benefits, and I'll address that in a moment. So this is, in fact, the last infill project in this area. And it is very consistent with the general development pattern that has occurred. And most of it, I would say the plurality, I can't say the majority, but the plurality of the buildings are multi-family. There are shops and stores and restaurants and doctors' offices and things of that nature also. And in fact, on Greenfield, the two parcels south of us are significantly larger multi-family projects that have been in place for some time. So we also want to point out that between the two meetings, we made a number of significant changes to the project. First of all, listening to the neighbors who were nearby and some of their concerns, we tried to address them as best we can. We reduced the number of units from 12 to 10. That increased our parking ratio to 1.6. And as you know, Royal Oak does have a requirement of two spaces. But we, many communities for one-bedroom and studios, which is what we have, is only one space. So we believe we're providing a very solid ratio of 1.6 spaces for the types of units that will be deployed here. We also have a six-foot masonry wall, not a wooden wall, so any light that may be coming from cars will not go into the neighboring properties. We also moved the dumpster from one side of the project to the other at the specific request of a neighbor. And we also added to this two additional trees to eight trees. As Mr. Murphy mentioned, we do believe we comply with the community benefits. We're a small but environmentally sustainable project. We've added 18, we have 18 solar panels in place, which will be primarily used for the outdoor lighting, the exterior lighting. We have two EV charging stations, a rain garden. Although it's not environmentally sustainable, we are putting in the stormwater detention system, which we always know needs to be done. We will be utilizing energy-efficient appliances, and we do have permeable paver. So for a project of its modest size, I think we're trying the very best we can to comply with those sustainable features. I do want to add one comment about the trees. We are not asking a waiver. I believe, based upon the arborist and the city's arborist, that the ordinance is not applicable to us. It says specifically, healthy trees will be replaced. These are not healthy trees by any way, shape, or form. Both the report and the, both the report and the city's own arborist is in agreement with that report, and the ordinance says it's healthy trees. We're not, no one's to be assessed for unhealthy trees. We're not trying to evade that. We're just trying to be fair about it. And we'll do the things we're required to do and beyond with community benefits. But I don't think they should be asked to replace trees that are unhealthy because it's not what your ordinance, and I think that's fair. The ordinance was clearly based on replacing healthy trees, and we don't have that situation here. So that all being said, we're certainly here to answer any questions that you may have on any aspect of the project.
Questions for the petitioner.
Thank you, Mayor. No, I appreciate sticking to the spirit of the ordinance and the letter of the ordinance for tree protection. So as Commissioner Hunt raised, our arborist's assessment was that the two smaller elm trees are fine, but could in the future develop the disease if the larger ones not removed. So in theory, we could remove the larger ones, still have two healthy trees on the property. Therefore, those two trees would be subject to the ordinance.
That could be the case. I'm trying to see about the two. This is with respect to the elm trees. Our arborist said that they were, have been decayed with carpenter ant damage, which has weakened the limbs and the trunk, and has a weak root system caused by, okay, I can't say this. It's some Latin term. And I, even though I was a Catholic, it was after Latin, was at Mass, so I can't say it. So I, the recommendation was removal of those trees. So I...
I think by and large, our arborist agreed with yours. I think by and large, our arborist agreed with yours. There does seem to be some discrepancy about these other two smaller elm, which I assume is not a substantial circumference of those trees. I was wondering if that is, if I'm understanding this properly, and that does trigger a small fee to replace those trees, because I understand that they're not substantial. They're the smaller elms on the property. Would that be agreeable, too?
Yeah. If that's the case, we would be willing to make a contribution of $2,500 to the tree fund, to replace, to have additional trees. We did increase the number of trees from six to eight, and we would make that additional contribution.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Cowan, when this went before the planning commissioner, was there any discussion about the length of the parking stalls?
About the what?
The length of the parking stalls.
Yes, yes. There was definitely was length, there was definitely discussion about that. And, you know, if you have a super-duty truck, it could be another foot longer than the space. But that's not the experience. I think if you go to any multi-family or any residential area, you're going to have a mix of cars. We don't think that's going to cause any specific problem in maneuvering. We did specifically, though I want everybody to know, talk to the fire marshal about the width, and that was approved by the fire marshal. So the width of the driveways and driveways.
Okay. So you all would be okay knowing that there might be residents that have a longer car, but that'd be a marking condition, and you all wouldn't have to work out there?
Yeah, we don't think that it's going to cause any significant problem.
Okay. And then also, at the planning commission, this originally was proposed as 12 units, correct?
Right.
Okay. And then you guys decided to come down to 10?
Yes. We've done for two reasons. One was to improve the parking ratio. But the other reason was a very practical one. During the discussion at the first meeting with the planning commission, there was concern that to get to the front of the building, that people would have to walk over the driveway. And so what we did, it was a very good suggestion, a very unique suggestion by our design team, in the middle, basically in the middle of the building, it's not perfectly centered, there'll be a tunnel at ground level. And that tunnel will allow residents to walk through there and then go to one of their units on either side, as opposed to having to go on the driveway. So that was done for two reasons, reducing the size of the, reducing the number of units to 10.
And you guys came up with that through resident feedback, then?
Yeah, well, that was primarily for, that was both. It was, planning commission did express a concern about that. We wanted to address it. We thought that was a legitimate concern, and I think we've addressed it very well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? All right.
Thank you. We'll bring the discussion back to the side of the table.
Thank you.
Commissioner Douglas.
Thank you, Mayor. As a member of the planning commission who favored this project before, I am going to favor it again. We see here an applicant who listened to comments from the public and comments from the planning commission and adapted their plan. It's, the challenges of an infill site on a tiny little site like this are, I mean, we've got a built-up city, and then you've got this little pocket, and what are you going to do with it? And yet, a property owner has the right to develop their property. And here, I think we see a thoughtful development. We've heard from the public about multi, as if the city determines what multi-family gets built in this city. And the city makes no such determinations. These projects are bought to us by developers, and they're developing multi-family units that respond to market conditions. Our master plan, our more than 20-year-old master plan, our zoning ordinance actually, specifies sizes of apartments that people aren't renting anymore. That's not the demand. The demand is for smaller units, often individually occupied. And the same is true of our parking requirements that are set at two spots per apartment, assuming larger apartments than we're seeing here and elsewhere. And I think this proposal meets that market demand. I think their parking ratio is appropriate. And really, at the end of the day, it's the banks and the funders that decide how much parking you're going to have in that building. And if you haven't proposed enough, you're not going to get your funding. So I think they've, again, acted very thoughtfully here, and I am going to move approval of the resolution that the ordinance is hereby adopted on first reading and further resolve that the city commission directs staff to prepare a development agreement, et cetera, as articulated in the staff memo.
All right. A motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second?
I would second if it included Commissioner Dubbuck's tree comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot about the trees.
$2,500 to settle that dispute.
Yes, you're right. And also adding the provision that the developer pay a $2,500, pay $2,500 into our tree replacement fund. Sorry, forgot about that.
For Robert's rules, that was just an emotional pause. The emotion was still going. Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Collo. All right. Discussion. Commissioner Dubbuck.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the amount of work the planning commission put into this. I know there's a lot of misinformation about this project, a lot of strong feelings. Yeah, not having been there from square one, I just want to make sure I'm saying this accurately. So the entire east side of Greenfield from Albert to 13 Mile is almost exclusively multi-family. Is that right?
High-density block.
Yes.
This entire stretch of Greenfield?
Yep.
Okay. And we're talking about an intersection of 13 Mile and Greenfield, a major intersection between this long stretch of multi-family and a 7-Eleven?
Yep.
All right. And we're talking about putting a development that totally conforms with that entire stretch of road?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. With, I'm struggling to understand the intense controversy here, given that it totally conforms with everything else going on in there. The developer, as you said, aptly, has made substantial changes in response to public concern, also has hit the mark on many of our public benefits directives.
For 12 units.
Right.
Or 10.
To me, this is not a tremendously desirable lot. No one is going to propose putting a single-family home at the corner of 13 Mile and Greenfield. And it would be completely inappropriate for the city just to hold that property hostage by denying proposal after proposal until something comes in that does conform and would probably not be well-loved by some of the neighbors, anyway. This is a community priority to have multi-family, meeting the needs of seniors, young families, and folks who don't necessarily are in a position of body yet. I understand, you know, that we need to raise concerns and have a conversation. I think, actually, the back and forth of planning is evidence the process working and getting to a place where we have a proposal on the table that's desirable. So I don't need to re-say everything you said. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to make sure I'm understanding. I'm looking at this stretch of road. It's entirely multi-family. So I'm not understanding why this would be of grave concern. I think there's a narrative that we're plopping something right in the middle of a neighborhood. We're putting it right in a stretch that totally conforms with exactly what we're doing here, anyway. Only this one comes with substantial environmental benefits proposed by the developer.
For a 10-unit building.
For a 10-unit building. So I have no objection to this. I'm happy to support it.
Commissioner Hunt.
I was on the fence about this project. I had major concerns about the trees. But having the petitioner's arborist give an opinion about, you know, the condition of the trees, and then the city's arborist confirming that, with the exception of the two, I'm not in any position to refute that. I'm not an arborist, so I'll go with the opinion of the experts. And an additional concern was the parking that has been well explained. But I think that this is a project that will benefit the community. It incorporates many of our community benefits items that we've included in our checklist. And it's in a position that will likely draw the attention of those that are working at Beaumont Hospital, or Cornwall, I'm so sorry, Cornwall Hospital, right down the road. The concern that many renters are transient, are going to be in and out, and not really care about the city and, you know, the, our community, I, you know, I'm highly offended by that because I have many family members and many friends who rent in this community, and I think they're more engaged in the community than many people. So that concern, you know, has no impact on my decision or any, at all. So I like the project. I'll be supporting the project. And I'm grateful for the developers that listened to the community and took a look at what the city was asking for in developments and implemented that into their project.
Commissioner Mason.
Okay. It's questions, I think, for Commissioner Douglas. So you said, where did the $2,500 number?
So you said, where did the $2,500 number come from, for the trees?
The two small elms.
They proposed it.
So, okay, so the tree replacement that's listed in here is $37,000.
But that was for all the trees?
So we're saying that...
Of all, all but two of which are unhealthy.
I'm confused here, because it says 80 trees, and they're doing, putting in six, and that was $37,000, and now if we're, if we're taking out, like, maybe 10 of those trees, that wouldn't that make it like 70 to six, and shouldn't it be? I'm confused about the numbers. You see what I'm saying?
And I think they offered an arbitrary number, and I, Commissioner Dubb seemed to find it acceptable, and so do I.
80 is what we require by zoning right now.
Commissioner Dubb, please, explain, explain to me, but then I have something else I want to point out.
So I appreciate that it's a concession, because there seems to be just a slight bit of daylight between our arborist and their arborist. Our arborist believes that those trees would be end-of-life were the development not happening, because the other trees would remain. So the development is, the developers are removing those trees that would otherwise disease these two trees, but that's the only condition in which these two trees would continue to exist, anyway, according to our arborist. So, I think it's a reasonable concession to settle a dispute that's otherwise not really provable, unless we remove all those other trees, leaving the two that are not yet diseased. So, I thought it was, because there's no real way to determine that likelihood and come to a real number that I think would comply with our ordinance.
Okay, so I mean, I think I must, I must be missing something, but I still don't understand, like, looking at the trees that were discussed by the arborist, how we get from $37,000 to $2,500. That's a very big drop, right?
Because there's only two trees in dispute of all those trees that our arborist agreed, questioned their current status. So the arborist agreed on all the, our arborist agrees on all the other, except for those two, that were the smaller elms, is my, my reading of it.
Okay. Commissioner Collo?
Somebody's got to help me here.
So Commissioner Macy, when you drive by, there is a large tree in the center that's like 60, let's just say 60 inches in diameter, right? That tree, when this calculation was originally made, was assumed to be healthy, as were all the other trees on the lot.
So it's the size of the tree?
So it's the size of the, that 200-inch is, 200-inch times 200-some, I think $250 an inch that we charge when you remove a tree and don't replace it, is how they come up with $36,000. Subsequently, from this report, they sound arborist, and we sound arborist, and they said, no, wait, those trees need to go anyways. So when this report was made, there were 200 inches at, at $200-some dollars, comes up to the $36,000.
Okay.
And that's why these unhealthy trees, which, once again, I mean, we have a very robust ordinance, that's, no, now we're talking about this.
No, 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 I'm taking back the money.
This is amazing.
Commissioner Collo is saying that size matters.
Okay, so that is helpful, I think I do get it now. I'm, I was confused, because I'm looking at this chart where it says, required 80 trees, proposed six trees, and then right next to it, potential tree replacement fee of $37,000. So I'm looking at number of trees, not the size of the trees. Still seems a little bit, I don't know, I guess I would ask for more.
Yeah, our ordinance is really heavy, heavy on the, on the larger the tree, the older it is, the more that that fee escalates, so if you have a sampling there...
Right, I remember how it works, but you can see why I'm confused.
Yeah, it was a good question, but it was the big tree leading the fines.
The big tree leading the fines, all right. Okay, and then the next one, so now back to my question for Commissioner Douglas. So I'm with Commissioner Dubb, is that, in that I'm confused about why this was quite so controversial. I did not watch the Planning Commission meetings, confession, so can someone explain to me why, like, I, we don't normally see this, right, that the Planning Commission deadlocks twice and has to send it up with no recommendation? So, so can you speak for your absent colleagues?
Clarify your question.
Mine was...
Why were people so, given what we were just talking about, about how this seems to fit the character of the neighborhood, and they did all the things that we asked them to do, and like, why was this so controversial of planning?
There were probably 75 people there who came to comment on the master plan topic, which was later on the agenda, and many of them, who don't live anywhere near this site, spoke on the, on this subject. And from a basis of, as I explained earlier, zoning that is terribly outdated, which is why we're trying to fix it in the first place. So, that's, that was the public comment.
And the concerns that came up were, that I listened to carefully, were the people that actually lived behind, and so they had some real good questions. One was the location of the dumpster. The other was the screening wall. And those were things that the, that the petitioner resolved. Some of the other concerns we typically get, like, okay, you're putting 10 units in here, it's going to cost so much traffic. Well, 10 units on Greenfield, you know, we have to look at the data, and we have to look at, you know, those numbers, and sometimes you get those concerns. Some of the concerns about, you know, hey, this is green space, you know, it should be preserved. We obviously can't, as a planning commission, say, to the petitioner that owns the property that has a right to develop it, to say, you should make it a park. We're deciding, we're the dictators. So some of the, I mean, I empathize with the neighbors. There was also a number of people there that, you know, I don't think had an adjacent interest in this property suggesting things, but for the folks that came out, that touched this property, that had legitimate concerns, some, all of them real concerns, some of them, in our experience, are not concerns that would come to fruition, some of them, we have no legal authority to dictate what goes on the property, and then some, the primary ones, the petitioner addressed. So it was, it's an odd year, it's 2023.
It is indeed. Thank you. Thank you to the entire commission, for that, for those robust answers.
You're welcome, Commissioner Macy.
Yeah, let me finish.
All right, we do have a motion on the table, right?
Yes.
All right. I'm going to, anybody else? I always do my look twice. Everyone thinks I'm saying no, but Commissioner Douglas calls me out all the time, because I tend to be a left-oriented person. All right. I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right, well, good luck, gentlemen. Good luck with your project.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Take care.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the final item on tonight's agenda, which is the appointment of the city assessor.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. We are bringing to you an enthusiastic recommendation of appointment of the city assessor. Per the city charter, Chapter 3, Section 15, there are five positions that are appointed by this body, so three of which are sitting at the table here, myself, city attorney, and city clerk, but the city treasurer and the city assessor are also appointed by the city commission. So, we have made a offer of employment and acceptance to Anthony Switkowski, who will become our next city assessor, starting on the approximate date of October 9th, and so presenting this recommendation to you for your ratification, for approval, per the requirements of the city charter.
Any questions for Mr. Bright? Okay, all right, glad we got a good find.
Yeah.
Nice work.
Thank you.
All right, any motions? Commissioner Douglas?
I move approval of the appointment.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. All right, discussion. Just wish Mr. Guyermin excellent retirement. I've had a chance to talk to him a couple times, and he's smiling from cheek to cheek, ear to ear, and obviously with Mr. Switkowski, we wish him the best of luck, joining a strong team here, and I think he'll find a good place here, so. All right, I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right, notwithstanding anything for the betterment of our community, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Got a motion by Commissioner Macy, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubb, discussion. Good night, call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.